The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspata. Laspata is present. Alderman Hopkins. Hopkins is present. Alderman Dowell. Dowell is present. Alderman King. King is present. Alderman Harriston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is present. Alderman Harris. Harris is present. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zloski Garza. Zloski Garza is present. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is present. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Cardness. Cardness is present. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is present. Alderman Burke. Burke is present. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is present. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is present. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is present. Oh, Alderman Moore. Moore is present. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is present. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is present. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is present. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is present. Alderman Scott. Oh, Scott is present. Alderman Sechel Lopez. Sechel Lopez is present. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is present. Alderman Irvin. Irvin is present. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is present. Alderman Reboyas. Reboyas is present. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is present. Alderman Wagispak. Wagispak is present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is present. Alderman Vegas. Vegas is present. Alderman Mitz. Mitz is present. Alderman Cesado. Cesado is present. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is present. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is present. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley. Riley is present. Alderman Smith. Smith is present. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is present. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is present. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman is present. Alderman Martin. Martin is present. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is present. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is present. Alderman Silverstein. So, oh, nope. Alderman Silverstein? Thought I saw her. Okay. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer is present. Anyone else that I've missed?
There are 45 members present. We have a quorum. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and continue to stand for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the invocation, which is going to be delivered by Rabbi Michael Siegel from Ashayam synagogue. Rabbi, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There's a story told about a man who we would call today as being directionally challenged. He was in a forest and he found himself to be lost. And he wandered for an entire day and found himself to be where he started and came to the conclusion that the clearing he was standing in would be his burial place. And suddenly he looked up and another man came into the clearing. And the first man ran up to him and hugged him and said, "Thank God you are here. You're going to save me and lead me out of here." And the second man began to laugh and said, "I'm lost too." The first man began to cry and say, "Now we're both going to die here." And the second man said, "Well, here's what we know. We know that the way that you came was not the right way and the way that I came was not the right way. Perhaps together we can find our way out." This old Jewish parable has some resonance in our age. Wouldn't you agree? Ladies and gentlemen, you are the leaders of one of the great American cities. And looking at the news on any given day, it feels as though we have lost our way. In this room, there are so many different opinions, different approaches to the issues that face Chicago. In a country that is so horribly divided, a country where people have stopped listening to one another, where the word compromise can earn an elected official the name traitor, let this body be a reflection of what American democracy can look like. The story that I told you reminds us that we are only going to find our way out if we come together with that spirit of compromise, listening to one another, working together, doing what is best for all of the citizens of this great city. On this November morning, together, we ask God to help us be better listeners, to help us appreciate that no one person in this room has the answer. But like the men in the story, the way out is seeing where we have gone wrong in order to find the way that is right so that we can go forward into a new day, into a better tomorrow. May God open us, give us the ability to speak thoughtfully, to listen carefully, and join hands and walk together for the good of every man, woman, and child in this great American city.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's time for public comment. Mr. Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. Our first speaker is Mr. Bruce Perry.
Madam Mayor, Council Alder Persons, distinguished guests, thank you for allowing me to address the city council. I am Dr. Bruce Perry. I am the veteran coordinator for the National Union of the Homeless, an economist, and a member of the Illinois Union of the Homeless. I am formerly homeless myself and want to address the need to get all the homeless off the streets of Chicago now. People are dying on the streets. In just two encampments, we have recently seen four deaths. It is unconscionable that in the richest country and one of the richest cities in the world, people are dying due to lack of shelter and services that this country is committed to. The Illinois Union of the Homeless is dedicated to organizing the homeless in their own interests and to demand that the system meet their basic needs. Being poor is not a disgrace. Unaddressed poverty is the disgrace. Take, for example, the Hotel Julian. The city is paying for 175 rooms each night in that hotel. There are only 75 rooms occupied, a 57% vacancy rate, and the current goals are to increase that to 115, still a 34% vacancy rate. We have families with children living in the hallways of shelters. It is unacceptable that thousands of people have been on waiting lists for housing for decades. We need to change the city's standards, which restrict occupancy to seniors and the disabled, and to get everyone we can off the streets and fill that hotel and other vacant dwellings. There are 440 vacant CHA apartments in Cabrini-Green and nearly 500,000 vacant HUD apartments nationally. Public housing is everywhere, being managed by private companies, whose main interest is to make a profit, not to house the homeless. This is a classic conflict of interest. Abuses and evictions are rampant. We need public housing run by public authorities with a mission of ending homelessness now. We need to fund single-room occupancy, SRO apartments, and permanent housing for all homeless people in the city. The funds are available. What is lacking is the will to rid the city of homelessness altogether. As Dr. Martin Luther King said, "True compassion is more than flinging a coin to the beggar. It is not haphazard and superficial." It comes to see that an edifice, which produces beggars, needs restructuring. We must fight poverty, not the poor. Homelessness is on the increase. The economy is generating homelessness, and we must recognize it is the responsibility of elected officials at every level to relieve the burden that the economy places on the least among us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Our next speaker is Anna Burke.
Good morning. My name is Anna Burke, and I am a speech and language pathologist and a health educator with a community health focus. Today, I urge you to stop what you are doing for the remainder of this three minutes to listen. This past Sunday at Mount Bethlehem MB Church, their lesson said, "Sometimes it seems we never learn from our mistakes or the mistakes of others. It is bad enough to sin against God, but it is far worse to repeatedly sin against Him in the same manner. Wise people will learn from their failures and seek God's help to not repeat them." In 2015, I was contracted at the United Neighborhood Organization Soccer Elementary and Soccer High School campuses in Chicago. When I worked at Uno, I saw news stories about Laquan McDonald. Although I never met him in person, I consider him to be a very special angel. On my way to Uno Soccer Schools from Lockport in Will County, I would picture Laquan McDonald walking with his head held high outside of a McDonald's restaurant I passed in Chicago. Although I never met Laquan McDonald, I read he had unique learning needs. If this is true, the police would have had no way of knowing that Laquan had a disability. People with disabilities can often be misunderstood. I am concerned about the Chicago police officer that went to prison because I'm guessing he did not have training to work with people with disabilities. I also read police did not have resources they were supposed to have. This is why I am again offering to help with the consent decree to help train police about people with disabilities. I would urge Chicago City Council not to accept any ward remapping until Chicago begins to share with other cities because the education of all students in our state and across our country is one of our most important priorities. Many suburbs all around Chicago share resources by participating in special education cooperatives, where districts from different towns share money to best support students and contain costs. School districts all around Chicagoland also have school buses, so students do not have to take public transportation, which in my opinion is not age appropriate since students' decision-making and problem-solving skills are still developing. Please demand to share resources equitably and openly with towns and cities outside of Chicago. When district, cities, towns, and special education cooperatives share money, it creates honesty because they are accountable to each other. Some students do require more money for special education, gifted education, English as a second language, and reading intervention. Many suburbs share for special education. On multiple occasions, I have seen students from one district go to another district if everyone feels it's best to meet the students' needs. Money needs to be shared between towns and cities to be equitable for all students, including students who attend charter schools. Charter schools receive less funding and seem to be placed in places that primarily have minority communities. Partial funding of any student is unacceptable because there are laws that need to be followed, such as the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Also, when we create wards of a city that don't share resources equitably between wards, we are only hurting ourselves. Dear God, please bring equity and peace to our community.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Our next speaker is Adele Barxdale.
Hello, my name is Adele Barxdale. I'm a community activist. And today, I want to say hooray, hooray. This is a sanctuary city, okay? But remember, building up and reclaiming the Black community. The Black neighborhoods have been stumped, ground for removal, elements that are crucial to neutral economic growth. In order for the Black neighborhood to become community again and build up the fire, demand must be put in effect. We demand reparation in the Black community. By reseating reparation, we want our community to look like downtown. We want our children to be able to go to school without being feared to go to school. Our children are not black bad. They just don't get the right information, the right stuff in their community. They don't get nothing in their school. Their schools are poorly abandoned. They walk around, ride CTA. They are treated like animals. Our Black children deserve best in the Chicago community. We understand other cultures need theirs, but Black people been here forever. We been suffering, being disrespectful, treated bad all through our life. We have to fight because no way we fighting because we can't give up because our life, our children, our family is involved. We love our family. We love Black people. I am Black, and I'm proud to be Black. But the point is respect because we respect every other culture. We ride with other culture. We go with the massacre and demand. We go with the Irish and demand. We demand for every other culture but our own culture. We get zero, okay? And we have built the United States. We not Africa. We are Black. We been here a long, long time. And our children deserve the best. And our community need to be uplifted, bring some jobs, economic development. Aldermen, you know who you are. Do the right thing, mayor, because we for everybody, mayor, what you said your inauguration in 2019. You said you for all the people. So be for all the people, especially the Black people. We need help. We are suffering, and we do not deserve to be treated any kind of way. We respect. We demand respect. We deserve respect. We deserve our children to walk down the streets, go to school, and look at the stores in their community instead of going out to community. They need grocery store, clothing store, school buses, very good schools, not just schools that's crum up, that they got schools in their neighborhood they cannot go to. That's not right, but that's another story. That's not for me to discuss that because that's Chicago public school.
Thank you, Ms. Barxdale, for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is George Blakemore.
I am a concerned citizen, but I am a Black concerned citizen. Now, I have a problem with the building department. In the Madam Lightfoot, Lady Lightfoot, I want you to send somebody over to the building department because they do pay to play there. Pay to play, these inspectors are in cahoot with the building owners. The last commissioner of the building department told me, Mr. Blakemore, over half of the buildings in the city of Chicago have violations. Well, you can think of, yes, maybe for a minor violation for a month or two, but my experience, because I'm a tenant, I've been living at 1347 North Davenport for 55 years. What happened? The landlord changed over illegally from the ballast system to the wall system. He didn't go to the building department because the building department and the landlord was working together. That was 15 years ago. Then now they want to evict me. Evict me. And the reason, "Did you pay your rent, Mr. Blakemore?" Yes. Well, it was a settlement that I was supposed to get $7,000, $3,000 when I moved out, $4,000 when I signed the agreement, $4,000 when I moved out. Then COVID-19 came, and this had never happened in America since 1919, and I wasn't able to move. So I never got my $4,000, but I'm still getting the eviction. And the building department is pay to play. They end with the landlord. So I went to another meeting, a community meeting. I think it was at Roosevelt. And I found out that these violations go on for 15, 20 years. Open violation. Now, Mr. Blakemore, you never speak personal about yourself. Go to the Black people. You're Black. Get on these Black ass altar. Excuse my English now. These Black altar, they are disgraceful. They allow this sanctuary to go on in our global city. Somebody said, "Mr. Blakemore, Harold Washington brought it in." I didn't vote for Harold Washington that second time. No, I did not. Sanctuary, anybody need sanctuary is Black people. Insane in America. No other group have been enslaved. So, Mr. Blakemore, you're good for the whole city of Chicago. May God bless you, Mr. Blakemore.
Mr. Blakemore, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Duval Petway.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor Lightfoot, distinguished guests, and Alderman. My name is Duval. I'm a fashion designer. I like to, as I stand on the shoulders of those on the ground, there's something happening at ground level that, Mayor, I'd like you to know about. There's a, I'm sorry, sir, I can't even hear myself. There's a gentleman, Asa Powell, and another gentleman, Victor Woods, and they're going into the prison system, into the prison system. And what is happening is they're talking to the prisoners before they're released. And they're sharing what's happening on the streets at ground level. Now, many of us might not be familiar with the bottom line of gang and how the gangs work, but they do work with some type of agreement and they do have a lot of power. They're able to talk to the people inside the prison to get them to sign off before they hit the streets to help protect children and women particularly. It's a start. It would be brilliant if we could connect with those gentlemen, Victor Woods and Asa Powell, and create a committee, someone from the mayor's office, the police department, and a mediator, somebody like myself, where the fighting doesn't have to happen, but we can go into the system and talk to these guys before they're released because when they're released, they're released with anger in their hearts. Last time I was here, I accused everyone of being like mafia bosses that couldn't get along. But what I realized is that here in Chicago, you gotta be some type of gangster. And I'm sorry, Mayor, should I wait because I'm talking to you? Now you're talking to someone else? I'll wait. Thank you. I'm not going to call Auntie Maxine to reclaim my time. I'm gonna keep it moving. If we could meet with these gentlemen and go within the prison systems, instead of trying to sue gang bangers for something that they don't have, it's more brilliant that we work with them. And that, once they've paid their time, let's try to console them. I'm standing on the shoulders of a little bit of everybody on the ground, and this is right across the board from Black to white prisoners. Let's go inside. Let's share with them. Let's get them to sign off to protect, and then let's work with them upon their relief. Thanks so much. Have a wonderful day. And Mayor, I will vote for you for a second term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petway, for your comments. Our next speaker is Dominic Suria.
I'm Dominic Suria of the great Jeanette Taylor's 20th Ward. Since it started six years ago, I have been a part of the Coalition for a Community Benefits Agreement to stop the displacement of the majority of residents in neighborhoods like mine, Woodlawn, to protect the tens of thousands of longtime working-class African-American families around the Obama Center's Jackson Park site. In 2020, we won the Community Benefits Agreement for Affordable Housing, which commits the city to allocating a quarter or 52 of its Woodlawn vacant lots for developments with a portion of units for residents most at risk of being displaced, residents making up to 30 or 50% of the area's median income. But over a year later, these lots have not been selected, much less offered to developers. We, the CBA Coalition, are demanding that you, Mayor Lightfoot, set aside these lots now, specifically all of the city's vacant lots on my neighborhood's commercial corridor, 63rd Street, east of Cottage Grove, lots that are closer to the Obama Center's FX and whose zoning allows for the highest density mixed-use construction, the lots that can create the most affordable housing for low-income and all residents. Moreover, thanks to increasing calls from our members in South Shore, the CBA Coalition is also demanding a comparable ordinance to stop displacement in South Shore, an even larger neighborhood also bordering Jackson Park, that was cut out of the CBA ordinance unilaterally by Alder Person. We released the specific demands around this last weekend. I am past board chair of University Church and current board chair of the church's Woodlawn Development Associates, which, for longer than I've been alive, has provided essentials like a 10-unit affordable complex. I know how much demand there is for affordable housing. I also live in a 21-unit mixed-income complex co-op that church members purchased in 1980. I have watched as the Obama Center's fight was announced in 2016, as residents, as rents shot up around me as soon as 2017, such that I could not afford to live in a smaller apartment across the street from me at market rate. Finally, I'm the son of an immigrant from Indonesia, and I lived in Singapore until my father insisted that I'd have a better life in the United States, moving us back here, back to the United States, where he could, to the part of the United States where he could get a job, rural Texas. Now I have made it back to the state of my birth. Let's make this city a city I can tell my family and around the world is not as hypocritical as our country has seemed in recent years. Madam Mayor Lightfoot stopped waiting to release the land you control and has committed for Woodlawn, and Mayor and city council do just as much for South Shore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suria, for your comments. Our next virtual speaker is Marilyn Harper.
Good morning. My name is Marilyn Harper. I am a community activist and a board member with Stop South Side Together Organizing for Power. And I would like to say first, thank you, Mayor Lightfoot, City Council, for giving me this opportunity to speak today. I am also a Woodlawn resident. I have lived in on the South Side over 25 years, along with my daughters. And we, the Community Benefits Agreement, CBA Coalition, are concerned members and are requesting to meet with the Department of Housing to solicit the 52 lots won in Woodlawn. We would like to schedule a meeting with the Department of Housing, inviting Alderman Jeanette Taylor, and we would like you to please respond by next Wednesday, November 24th, to confirm. This historic ordinance still requires much work to be done, and we have been awaiting email correspondence reporting back on our original request made during the community meetings that took place this summer. On July 27, 2021, we stated, as we have said before, we agreed to the priorities of getting the most possible affordable units. Our goal is to see at least 1,000 truly affordable units to be developed on the 52 lots. In order to do that, we want all the high-density lots on 63rd Street, east of Cottage Grove, to be included in the 52 lots. We also would like the lot on the 6300 block of Woodlawn, directly across from the close mental health center. And it has been our three months since our last community working group, August 17th of 2021, but we are very pleased on the housing programs. It has been finalized and rolled out. But we have to make sure that the most important displacement preventative piece isn't put on the shelf to look at later. We need to know which 52 lots are ours today so that we can serve, protect, and provide sustainable, affordable housing for all. And we would also like South Shore to have a Community Benefits Agreement, a CBA, because South Shore is going through the same issues. Many residents have now seen a high increase in rents and property taxes, and they will be forced to move out. And unfortunately, they were not included in the ordinance. We started this fight against displacement over five years ago on the South Side. It was announced that Jackson Park would be chosen for the location of the Obama Presidential Library, and we got the ordinance on record. We have chosen our 52 lots. Mayor Lightfoot promised in her campaign that she would provide more affordable housing. We need this in writing. Words are meaningless without action. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Harper, for your comments. Our next virtual speaker is Brandon Patterson.
Good morning. My name is Brandon Patterson. I'm a native and resident of South Shore in the 5th Ward, where Alderman Lesby Harriston is my Alderman. I'm also a member of the CBA Coalition, and I'm here to speak on the Coalition's demands for housing protections for residents of I'm also a member of the CBA Coalition, and I'm here to speak on the Coalition's demands for housing protections for residents of South Shore and Woodlawn. As Dominic and Marilyn noted before me, last year, the Coalition won the Woodlawn Housing Preservation Ordinance, but the city still has not designated the 52 lots, vacant lots, that were specified in the ordinance for development of affordable housing. Madam Mayor, we need you to give us the 52 lots we were promised, but specifically, we want the lots that will allow for the most development of affordable housing. This includes all the lots zoned for high-density development east of Cottage Grove along 53rd Street. Additionally, the South Shore neighborhood was cut entirely out of the Woodlawn ordinance. And yet, according to research from UIC, the Obama Center is causing rising rents and displacement here, where most residents are low-income and are already rent-burdened. Most people in South Shore are renters, and if the city does not take immediate action, many of them will be priced out and pushed out of the neighborhood. But it's not just renters who could be displaced. Many longtime homeowners, especially seniors on fixed incomes, are vulnerable too because of property tax increases. We need the city to act to ensure that longtime residents of the neighborhood get to stick around to enjoy the Obama Center when it opens its doors. Through months of research and engagement with hundreds of our neighbors, we've developed a list of actionable steps that the city can take now to protect longtime residents of South Shore and prevent displacement. And Madam Mayor, we need you to make it happen. We're proposing expanded protections for tenants, financial support for homeowners and condo owners, and for low-income residents looking to buy, affordability requirements for new housing developments, tools to hold landlords accountable, but also support for mom-and-pop landlords as well. Chicago lost nearly 10% of its black population in the last decade, according to the 2020 census. Housing is the number-one reason cited for why people leave, according to WBEZ News. The steps we're proposing can immediately prevent more displacement of black residents in South Shore. Madam Mayor, if you're serious about equity and about ensuring Chicago remains a livable city for all Chicagoans, then you will act on the CBA Coalition's sensible policy demands to protect South Shore residents from displacement, and you will set aside the 52 lots in Woodlawn that were asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson, for your comments. Our next speaker is David Zedeja.
Hello there. My name is David Zedeja, and I live in the 5th Ward. Leslie Harrison is my alderman. I am also a member of the CBA Coalition. Madam Mayor Lightfoot, we need you to give us our 52 lots in Woodlawn, as promised in the CBA ordinance. This includes all, for affordable housing. This includes all of the high-density lots east of Cottage Grove on 63rd Street. We have been waiting for over a year, and the ordinance specifies that anything built on those lots only has to remain affordable for 20 years from passage of the ordinance. People are being displaced right now. Black families are having to leave their homes. The more you drag your feet, the less time residents have to secure stability, and we cannot afford to wait any longer. As Brandon noted, my neighbors in South Shore were also cut entirely out of last year's ordinance, and they need protections too, as the Obama Presidential Center is coming to our neighborhoods. Here are some examples of what the Coalition is proposing for South Shore to make sure folks stay in their homes. A cash rental assistance that can support 1,800 families who are evicted from their homes every year in South Shore, which already is the number-one neighborhood eviction center of Cook County. Woodlawn already has a rental assistance program, and South Shore residents need one too. The city can also set aside publicly-owned vacant lots in the neighborhood for deeply affordable housing, similar to what's been done in Woodlawn. As rents rise and affordable housing stock keeps disappearing, these lots can be a safety net for many low-income and working-class families. We also need a renewed South Shore program modeled after the new Woodlawn program to provide grants, down payment assistance for residents looking to buy their own homes. This is especially important because many black families have been denied the opportunity to buy homes in their own communities. This would be helpful for people like Tahiti, one of our neighbors, and a member of the Coalition who lives in South Shore. She was unable to find a home she could afford in South Shore after living there for 42 years and has now been forced to move to Dalton, Illinois. She is not moving by choice. She is being displaced. This program would help people like Tahiti stay in their communities they know, love, and care about. Chicago is losing more and more black residents every day, as the census showed. The Coalition's demands can help stop the bleeding. We fought for five years before the city passed the Woodlawn ordinance. South Shore residents cannot afford to wait that long. Madam Mayor Lightfoot, we are asking you to act now to protect vulnerable residents in both neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Zedeja, for your comments. Our next speaker is Dixon Romeo.
Hi, this is Dixon Romeo, not Dixon Romeo. Sorry to give you a hard time, my man. Um, yeah, and I'm, I'm a 5th Ward resident. I live in South Shore. I'm a member of the CBA Coalition, and I'm here to demand that not only does the city keep its promise to Woodlawn in terms of the 52 lots, but also that the city takes seriously and moves immediately on our actionable demands that we've presented for South Shore. The reality of it is, is that all neighborhoods surrounding the Obama Center are susceptible to displacement, but South Shore especially, because we're also directly along the lakefront. We've seen condos being announced to be developed on 78th and South Shore Drive that cost $800,000 in a neighborhood where the majority of folks are making 26K, right? So that's wholly unaffordable for the majority of folks who live in South Shore. Keep it 100, it's wholly unaffordable for most folks in City Council, right? That is just an unaffordable price. And if that's the cost on 78th Street, I'm concerned about what it's going to be on 75th. I'm frightened for what it would be on 71st, and I can't imagine what's going to be on 67th, right? We know that overwhelmingly, folks in our neighborhood are vulnerable to displacement because we have been the number-one eviction neighborhood, and the 5th Ward is the number-one eviction ward since at least 2016, right? Every day, there are eviction filings happening in South Shore. And although we're the number-one eviction ward in the city and neighborhood, we're the number 61 out of 77 in terms of how much folks actually owe, right? So direct cash will help folks be able to stay in their places, right? We know that in South Shore, 77%, 77% of folks rent, and there aren't a ton of homes available for purchase, right? But we know that renters want to be homeowners. We know that folks want to be able to stay and benefit from the price increase that comes with the center. But for that to happen, you have to be able to own property, right? And so that's why in our demands, we're asking for programs that help renters become homeowners, either through the CHA's Choose Own Home Ownership Program or through other ones, right? Overall, these demands are extremely actionable. They help, they can, they're not going to stop any development. They won't stop the growth of black business in our community, but they will help folks be able to stay and benefit, right? There's no, these folks, these demands have been checked, right? We've looked. The city has the money. The city offers a lot of these programs. When we look across the country, there are different innovative programs, like Right to Return programs that the city doesn't currently offer, that other cities across the, the country offer. And finally, right, we've talked to lawyers, right? We've talked to former folks who, who used to work in city-state and county government, right? These are immediately applicable legal demands that can help stop displacement immediately. And so the call is on our alderpeople, but also on you, Mayor Lori Lightfoot, to help make this happen, right? Let's make, let's get these demands done. We don't have five years to wait, like it took at Woodlawn. Let's get this done so that we can help ensure and stop displacement in South Shore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romero, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
This concludes the public comment period. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, resolutions. We have one resolution today in recognition of American, Native American Heritage Month. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules with immediate consideration of this resolution.
There are no objections, so ordered. Madam Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Whereas the land that is now the city of Chicago has always been and remains an important place for Native Americans, and whereas the city of Chicago is home to vibrant urban Native community that is among the largest in the United States and that comprises over 120 tribal nations, including Lakota, Cherokee, Navajo, Choctaw, and whereas November is National Negative American Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories of Native peoples, as well as the countless contributions of Native Americans, including, including the stewardship and protection of our land and waterways. And whereas the city of Chicago acknowledges that Chicago is located on the traditional homelands of the Ashenabe or the Council of Three Fires, the Ojibwe, Ojibwe, Ottawa, and Potawatomi nations, the city also acknowledges that many other nations consider this area their traditional homeland, including the Miami, Ho-Chunk, Mi'nominee, Sac, and Fox, Peoria, Cascasquia, Wee, Kikapu, and Mascutin. Whereas the city of Chicago acknowledges Kidahawa of the Potawatomi Nation for a role and foster in the community that has become, become Chicago. And whereas the city of Chicago is committed to promoting Native culture, heritage, and formal land acknowledgement, aligns with the city of Chicago's commitments to equity and social justice, now therefore be resolved that we, the mayor, and the members of the City Council assembled this 17th day of November 2021, affirm that the city of Chicago will continue to acknowledge, respect, and honor the connection of Native Americans to this land, and be it further resolved that the following land acknowledgement be prominently displayed by the city of Chicago and placed on the city's website. The city of Chicago is located on land that has been, has long been a center of Native peoples. The area is a traditional homeland of the Ashenabe or the Council of Three Fires, the Ojibwe, Ottawa, and Potawatomi nations. Many other nations consider this area their traditional homeland, including the Miami, Ho-Chunk, Mi'nominee, Sac, Fox, Peoria, Cascasquia, Wee, Kikapu, and Mascutin. The city specifically acknowledges the contributions of Kidahawa of the Potawatomi and fostering the community that's become Chicago. We acknowledge all Native peoples who become, came before us and who continue to contribute to our city. We're committed to promoting Native cultural heritage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen of the, of the City Council, we have a number of people in the visitor box I'm here in support of this resolution. I want to lift up a few that are, are noted. Dr. Doreen Wise, CEO, American Indian Association of Illinois. Melody Serna, Executive Director, American Indian Center. Lisa Burnell, CPS American Indian Education Program. Cindy Fox Starr, Special Events Coordinator, American Indian Center. Juliana Castro, American Indian Health Service of Chicago. Dominic Armstrong, American Indian Health Service of Chicago. And last but not least, Public Bill, or Building Commissioner Matt Bode, who is the Executive Counsel and Council of Elders Legal Counsel of the Monotop Tribe. Thank you all for being here. And I will say that Matt Bode is the first-ever Native American to hold a City of Chicago Commissioner position. Thank you very much, everyone. Are there members of the body that wish to speak? The Chair recognizes Alderman Haddon.
President, thank you. I rise in support of this resolution. Thank you so much for all your leadership in bringing this forward. And to our commissioner and our guests and leaders of our Native American community here in Chicago, it's really exciting for us to see this permanent land acknowledgement being included in our language. I hope that we can include this more in our practices in different ways. So I appreciate the leadership of our Native American community in helping to bring the city of Chicago forward. And as a representative of the 49th Ward, which includes Rogers Park, there's such rich Native heritage on the land that we now call Rogers Park, and I look forward to continuing to work with our partners at the American Indian Center to make sure that we're always bringing forth this history and the current, the current culture that we still have in Chicago. So appreciate you all for being here. Thank you, Madam President, for this resolution.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Well, good morning. You know, I just want to stand in support of this resolution, in support of this land acknowledgement. You know, the Western Hemisphere is home to so many First Nations, to so many Indigenous people. Coming from Mexico, which comes, gets its name as a country from the Mexica, the Indigenous people of the Central Valley of Mexico, I know that we are cousins. And while our history of colonization has meant that our identities have ended up being filtered in different ways, nonetheless, I think it's extremely important to recognize the Indigenous ancestry and particularly to recognize that in the city of Chicago, there are 75,000 urban natives from the American Indian and Alaska Native community, one of the largest groupings of urban natives east of the Mississippi. In 2018, I was so proud to work with the then-leadership of the American Indian Center to pass a resolution with the land acknowledgement ceremony. And it's so important to have land acknowledgements because we need to understand that the city of Chicago in and of itself is an Indigenous landscape. If we look at our roads, right? If we look at Milwaukee Avenue, if we look at the way in which our city has been laid out, those roads are actually Indigenous trade routes. And we know that those Indigenous trade routes were not just local in this area, but they also stretch out across what is now the United States and into Mexico, with people trading from Oregon, with people who are now in Mississippi, with people who are in Mexico now trading with people that are in Arkansas. So there was a very vibrant culture and trade network that existed. And I think it's also extremely important as well that we recognize that not only is Chicago home to 75,000 urban Indians, but there's also 150 tribal nations who are now found today in the city of Chicago. But we also need to acknowledge that the treaty with the Council of Three Fires have not been held up, that the, that in addition to sitting on ancestral lands, that there have been acts of genocide, deceit, forced removal, dispossession, appropriation of knowledge systems, and the implementation of a settler colonial structure which forms the structure of our current society. So it's important to honor people, but it's also important for us as a city and as a country to recognize the harm that's been caused and the genocide that's occurred, because we don't talk about that enough, right? And so I think that this land acknowledgement is important towards undoing some of that harm, but there's a lot more that needs to be done. And one thing that I do think we also need to recognize as well is that the representation of the American Indian on our city's seal, that is, that is Plains Indian regalia, right? That is Sioux regalia, right? That is not what someone who lived in this area on the banks of the Mississippi, would, on the banks of Lake Michigan, would have worn. So I just want to say thank you all so much for being here with us today. We, as a city of Chicago, have a lot more that we need to do, but this is a first good step. But a land acknowledgement cannot be the end of it, right? It needs to be the beginning of a conversation. There's a lot more that we need to do to address the harm that's occurred. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada. Other members of the body who choose to speak, please raise your hand.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Very glad to stand in support of this resolution as Alderman Haddon, several of us stood with you in Potawatomi Park earlier in October. It was for me a moment that felt really sacred, profound. It was also a space and time that was really sorrowful for me because I, I know, as Alderman Ramirez Rosa was saying, that there, there are tangible steps that we can take on the road to repentance for this city. Gestures, symbols that show where we want to go. But I know that equity means that we, we listen to those who have been oppressed and erased about what those symbols mean rather than defining them for ourselves. And I will only say, I, I appreciate, there's someone here from CPS. I appreciate the direction CPS has chosen to go with the second Monday in October. I trust that the city of Chicago is going to find the will to do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Laspada. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
There you go. Thank you, Madam Chair. I also stand to be associated with this resolution. As someone who is Guatemalan and therefore aware of my Mayan roots, I think about how the fact that we really try to categorize ourselves in ways that keep us separate. And we need to have a much more intentional understanding of those who have been here before us, those whose lands we are now on. I think we are getting to the point where society has a better understanding of that, that we know that there are people who are imperialists and colonizers who fashion themselves as those who have discovered when lands have already been here and people have already been here. So I appreciate and thank you for the resolution. And I do believe that land acknowledgement and acknowledgement is a good first step, but that we do have to work to make amends and to make sure that the acknowledgement isn't a one-time thing. But something that we continue to do as we think about the city when it comes to how we're naming our landmarks, our streets, when we're having days of recognition, because the contributions of our Indigenous people here in the city is important, valid, and something that needs to be recognized. And it's not lost on me that at a time when we're talking about remap and representation, we don't have enough conversation about our Indigenous folks here in the city and how they need to be represented. But I do think this is a first step, and I thank you very much for that. And thank you to our Indigenous neighbors. And thank you to our Indigenous neighbors and siblings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise in support of this resolution. And I want to say that at the same time that we celebrate Native American heritage, we have to remember how important it is to center Indigenous peoples in our practices and our policies. I am grateful for the inclusion of a land acknowledgement. And I believe that there's a lot more work to do to make sure that we recognize the harm done by centuries of colonialism. So we need to also focus on land back and establishing Indigenous Peoples' Day in place of Columbus Day. And make sure that our environmental policies are guided, led, and grounded in Indigenous knowledge. These are things that we can absolutely accomplish as lawmakers and we should aim for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Smith.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And thank you for spearheading and leading the way on this resolution. It's so wonderful to see our beloved Building Commissioner be able to stand here and be very proud of his heritage and of all the people around him. And I've been here, I've been here only 10 years and I've never seen this in City Council. So I'm so proud that we're taking this step. You know, the arts have been leading the way on this. And I, I, I know that we have not done enough to recognize the true past of our American history. And I'm very welcome, very glad to have this first step. And thank you very much for all your efforts in making sure that Indigenous population of Chicago and the nation is properly recognized and supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other members of the body that should speak? Alderman Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just reiterate what my colleagues have already stated and also look back and congratulate those who have come up through the city. Matt Bowday is one of our great leaders in the city on the public side of things. But I also know we have great leaders in each one of you through the American Indian Center and the organizations that promote Native American culture, not only in Chicago, but throughout the Great Lakes region. We just went to the 68th Annual Powwow just last month with my children to show them the types of things and the culture that, that you and your families try to promote and to build up. And I'm sure that it is, while it might just be the 68th for many of us, it goes back centuries where we have seen that culture thrive and continue to thrive in this area. So, Madam President, I would, I'd see that we're going to put this on the website and that we'll display this comment, this phrase in city. I would like to see it, I think, as my colleagues would in City Hall and in prominent places where we have visitors coming to show that that history is meaningful to all of us here in the City Council, but to the people of Chicago as well. And I thank you for bringing this resolution forward, which I strongly support. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ciccho Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And also we'd like to raise in support of this resolution and urge all of us, as we've seen, the issues affecting our Indigenous communities, our Native American, Native lands, to make sure that we do more for climate change, that we do more to address the issues affecting Indigenous communities across the country. When we see the fossil fuel industries threatening line three, when we continue to see the inequalities in our communities and our country, I think that we do, we need to do a lot more to honor and really recognize the contributions and the heritage in our communities. So again, thank you and honored to be here with all of you today.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, we also want to echo all that has been stated today and also wanted to say something, as I say, positive for our, for our Commissioner here, Commissioner Bowday. Appreciate the work and not, I won't say like a, I didn't know that, that you were actually a Native American. And, and it, we learn. And it's one thing you do in this job is you learn. And if you don't learn, you leave. So I, what I do want to say is that we, the contributions that your community has made, not only to Chicago, but to our nation in general. Because a lot of the struggles and challenges that our community has faced, those are parallel to what you all have faced. And so locked in solidarity, we stand and be with you all as you all celebrate the Native American Heritage Month. Thank you, Madam President.
I thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman King.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I too want to rise in support of this resolution. I appreciate my Native American heritage, Choctaw, Chickahominy, although I don't know as much about it as I do my African American heritage. I certainly stand on the shoulders of many. I seek to learn more and I appreciate this land acknowledgement as should this entire country. We should also seek to acknowledge other contributions that Native Americans have made to this country and make sure that they are uplifted for it for they have done and suffered for this country. And, and we should seek to make sure that we make amends for that. So thank you for this resolution. I think it's a great start, but we have a lot more to do. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman King. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
President, and I too rise to be associated with this resolution. It was not just this summer where I had the great privilege of visiting the Smithsonian Institutes in DC and taking my kids to go through a journey of learning on our great Native community. And it was a great pleasure to be in the presence there honoring your ancestors and those who have come before us. But I mostly wanted to rise to say that this land acknowledgement and acknowledgements of our Native American brothers, sisters is in high time as our community needs to recognize the atrocities that have been put forth on this community over generations. And we need to right those wrongs. And part of that is acknowledging our past and working towards a better future as I encourage all of my colleagues to, to, to continue to do so. So thank you for this, Madam President. And I'm happy to be associated with this resolution.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. Any other members of the body who choose to speak on this matter? I obviously join the members of the body in this resolution. It's very important that we take this step. The step towards healing, the step towards progress has to start with acknowledgement of the history and the past. And I'm mindful of the words of Alderwoman King. Many of us believe that we have Native American heritage, I too. But unfortunately, because of our past, it's difficult for us to really understand and embrace what that heritage actually looks like. But it's really important that we take this moment to uplift the fact, as Alderman Ramirez Rosa said, that you are a presence in our city, in our urban area. And that we need to acknowledge that fact, that the challenges that you face are real and that we have to come together in thinking about solving problems and make sure that we are not ignoring the unique circumstances of Native Americans in our midst. So this is an important step forward. This land acknowledgement, I think, starts us on the right path. But as we all know, and as you heard from many of the members of the body today, more work to do. And we look forward to working hand and glove with you to make sure that we're continuing to take steps and make progress, making sure that our children understand your history, all of our children. Making sure that we do things to move forward in a way that rights historic wrongs. So I appreciate your presence here. I appreciate your partnership and more work to be done. So thank you very much. Alderman Mitchell.
President, I now move, return to the regular order of business.
There are no objections, so order. Madam Clerk, Communications.
Madam President.
I'm sorry. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein. You're on.
Thank you. I just wanted to be recorded as President for the roll call.
Okay.
Madam Clerk. Communications Chairman, Honorable the Mayor to Honorable the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit herewith in ordinance authorizing the amendment of the 35th and Halsted Tiff redevelopment plan and project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing a favorable tax status for specified properties located in the city. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing the term budget services and service provider agreements for various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner Department of Housing I transmit herewith in ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended redevelopment agreement with KNW Communities LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned properties. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commission of Assets, Information, and Services I transmit herewith in ordinance authorizing the execution of a new lease agreement with Hastings Center Office LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection I transmit herewith in ordinance amending the municipal code regarding the licensing and regulation of tow trucks. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection I transmit herewith in ordinance authorizing the extension of the expanded outdoor dining program through 2022. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Transportation in Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Ryan C. Cortezar as a member of the Board of Ethics of a term expiring July 31, 2026. Such period allocated as follows, a term effective immediately and expiring July 31, 2022, to complete the unexpired term of Daisy S. Lozama, who has resigned, falling immediately by a full four-term term. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Kenneth Myers, Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Andrea Kirsten as the Chief Administrator of the Civilian Office of Police Accountability. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Public Safety. Two committees are being called, the Committee on Public Safety, Committee on Housing. The matter is referred to top the committee, to the Committee on Committees and Roles. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Aaron Harkey as the Commissioner of Cultural Affairs and Special Events. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, I have reappointed myself, Lori Lightfoot, as a member of the Public Building Commission to the term effective immediately and expiring September 30, 2026. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council, the following documents was filed in my office. Office of Inspector General's Advisory Report Regarding Chicago Fire Department's Management Enforcement of Protocols for Missing or Stolen Badges. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on October 27, 2021, and which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on November 17, 2021, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of the Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I also inform the City Council that the call for the special meeting and the matter considered by the City Council on October 29, 2021, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on November 17, 2021, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of the Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of various bonds, amendment of various bond ordinances and tax levies and the collection of direct annual taxes, which were passed by the City Council on October 27, 2021, and were requested to be published in special pamphlet, was published in special pamphlet form on November 5, 2021. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that ordinances authorizing the imposition of a tax levy approval of the year 2022 budget and the execution of a service provider agreements for special service area 24519, 20, 21, 2016, 22, 24, 26, 23, 45, 54, 61, 62, and 75 were passed by the City Council on October 27, 2021, and 75 were passed by the City Council on October 27, 2021, which were requested by be published in special pamphlet, were published in special pamphlet form on November 8, 9, 10, and 2021. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that ordinances authorizing the imposition of a tax levy approval of the year 2022 budget, execution of the service provider agreements, and amendment of year 2021 budgets for special service area number 1634, which were passed by the City Council on October 27, 2021, to requested to be published in special pamphlet, were published in special pamphlet form on November 8 and November 10, 2021. I, City Clerk Valencia, also transmit with here the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Zoning reclassifications of particular areas referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards and claims against the City of Chicago, which referred to Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, I have two appointments to the Police Board. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Public Safety.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, our committee reports. Starting with the Committee on Finance, Chairman Wegas back.
Thank you, Madam President. First, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met on Wednesday, October 13, 2021. Item number one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement and long-term ground lease with the Chicago Housing Authority by Oakwood Shores 3-1 Owner LLC, Oakwood Shores 3-1 MM LLC, to construct affordable housing at 616 to 630 East Pershing Road with up to $2 million in tax increment financing assistance in the 4th Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by a roll call vote.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Laspada is an aye. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman Dow is a yes. Alderman King. Alderman King is a yes. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Harrison is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zlasky Garza. Zlasky Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness. Cardness is a yes. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a yes. Alderman Burke. Burke is a yes. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a yes. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a yes. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is a yes. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alderman Irvin. Irvin is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a yes. Alderman Waguspack. Waguspack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Mitz. Mitz is a yes. Alderman Spisato. Spisato was a yes. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano was a yes. Alderman Riley. Riley is Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunney. Tunney is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a yes. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman is a yes. Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes.
The ayes are 45, the nays are zero. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it the motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wegas back.
Thank you, Madam President. Moving on to the report from the Committee on Finance meeting of November 15, 2021. Item number one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with Chicago Neighborhood Initiatives Incorporated for the use of general obligation bonds up to $5.3 million in tax increment financing funds and other funds for environmental remediation and site preparation activities on various parcels of city-owned property in the 24th Ward. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with Conservatory Apartments LLC, Interfaith Housing Development Corporation of Chicago for the use of up to $3.5 million in tax increment financing funds for construction of affordable housing located at 414 North Central Park Avenue in the 27th Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is regarding monthly settlements through the Law Department will be placed on file with clerk. Items four and five consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and denial of payment of various small claims against the city. If there is no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number six consists of one order authorizing a Tag Day permit for Children International Incorporated. If there is no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Now, item seven consists of five orders authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute settlement agreements. Item 7A is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement agreement in the case of David Brown, Independent Administrator of the Estate of Julia Lynn Callaway, Deceased, versus Curtis Pugh, City of Chicago, Municipal Corporation, Matthew Coffey, John O'Brien, Brian Rainier, Lloyd Hardman Jr., Adam Perselli, and Arneitha Moore, cited as 18L 8599 in the amount of $2 million. This item did receive favorable approval by the committee with the exception of excuse me, if no one else wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report. Alderman, would you mind if I finish my sentence? Thank you. I move passage by the first most favorable roll call of the vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion reconsider with the exception of Alderman Quinn, Lopez, Tabarez, Raboyas, Talafaro, and Cardona voting no, and anyone else wishing to vote no as well. Okay.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Laspada is a yes. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman, oh, sorry, Alderman, is not here. Alderman Dow.
The first item of the settlements.
Number seven. Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King. King is a yes. Alderman Harrison. Harrison is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zlasky Garza. Zlasky Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness. Cardness is a yes. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke. Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins. Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is a yes. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Burnett. Oh, sorry, yes. Alderman Irvin. Irvin is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a no. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is a no. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a no. Alderman Waguspack. Waguspack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Mitz. Mitz is a yes. Alderman Spisato. Spisato is a yes. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley. Riley is a no. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunney. Tunney is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a no. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman is a yes. Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes.
The ayes are 35, the nays are 11. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we reconsider that vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it the motion for reconsideration has failed. Chairman Wegas back.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, before I go on, Alderman Scott would like to speak to his item, which was number two on the agenda at the end of the report, unless you wish to.
No, that's fine. The chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Alderman, for allowing me to speak. In finance, my community was awarded a large amount of money to do the Thousand Homes Project that I think I talked a little bit about last month. It is 100 homes in a community that is desperately void of homeownership. These are affordable homes, and I want to thank you, Madam Mayor. When we had the press conference, I would say three or four months ago, when you, when you, well, first, you have been on board with this project for quite some time. But when we had the press conference to do groundbreaking on the two initial housing, you said to me, hey, we need to figure out how to do some more for this project, and this is doing a little bit more for that project. So I appreciate your willingness to work with my community, also the willingness of the Department of Housing and the Department of Planning, who have been in lockstep to make sure that this has happened. I also want to commend Chairman Osterman, who has been an advocate for affordable housing in and around the city, but more specifically in the 24th Ward in my community. He's been out several times to see these houses, and he knows the benefit that these new houses will bring to the west side of Chicago. It is a good day on the west side of Chicago. Affordable housing coming to North Longdale, a place that in '68 burned in fire from the riots and has not come to, back to full fruition since then. And so I think these are 100 little steps. We want to do 1,000 larger steps later on down the line, but this is a down payment for those 1,000 homes. And I want to thank you and the committee for allowing this to happen. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. Chairman Wegas back.
Thank you, Madam President. Moving on to item 7B. This is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement agreement in the case of Michael Williamson versus Officer Wilfredo Ortiz in the City of Chicago in the amount of $250,000. The item did receive favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, we can go to roll call vote.
Madam Clerk.
Anyone? Well, if no one is to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion reconsider with the exception of Alderman Napolitano wishing to be recorded as voting no on this item.
His objection will be noted, and otherwise so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 7C is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement agreement in the case of Central Austin Neighborhood Association and the ACLU of Illinois versus City of Chicago in the amount of $250,000. The item did receive favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion reconsider with the exception of Alderman Napolitano wishing to be recorded as voting no on this item.
No noted for the record. The chair recognizes Alderman.
And Alderman.
Madam President, well, with that, I ask temporary suspension of the rules so that I can be recorded as voting aye on number one on finance, so that I will be in accordance with all of these subsequent motions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
And Hopkins recorded as voting no, but.
I think Alderman Hopkins is not present for today's meeting. But we'll note his no vote for the record. With those two exceptions, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 7D is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement agreement in the case of Lovell Taylor versus the City of Chicago in the amount of $175,000. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And item 7E is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement agreement in the case of Johnson versus Winstead et al. in the amount of $300,000. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And this concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Chairman Wegas back. Next up, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Madam President and members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which met on November 10, 2021, the Committee recommends passage of the following item. A substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance year 2021 within Fund Number 925 for the Office of the Mayor, the Office of Budget and Management, the Department of Cultural Affairs and Special Events, the Department of Public Health, the Department of Family and Support Services, and the Department of Police and the Chicago Public Library. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Madam President.
All right, next up, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. My understanding is that Chairman Vegas has left the meeting. Why don't we skip this and we'll come back. Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Reporting for your Housing and Real Estate Committee, which met on November 9, 2021, the Committee has a series of reports recommending the passage of the following. Item number one is an amendment to a previously passed ordinance to increase the available loan amounts to multifamily program funds to replace and borrower Lazarus Renewal 2 LLC, Longdale Christian Development Corporation for rehabilitation project at 1857-1867 South Pulaski. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is an amendment to a multifamily loan agreement with 43rd Calumet Phase 1 LP for an affordable housing development in the 3rd Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is a second amendment to group room block sales agreement between the City's Department of Assets and Information Services, Department of Family Support Services, and the Hotel Julian at 168 North Michigan Avenue. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is the sale of vacant city-owned property at 3346-3348 West Carroll to Breakthrough Urban Ministries Incorporated. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is the sale of vacant city-owned property at 6333 South Champlain to Mark Richmond. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The last item is item number six, the sale of vacant city, fail of vacant, as is city-owned property at 1433-1443 East 77th Street, 7700 South Blackstone and 7708 South Blackstone to Regal Mile Ventures LLC for redevelopment as a film studio. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up, the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chairman Mitz.
Madam President and members of the City Council, I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We had a virtual meeting on November 15, 2021, and the following items were passed by the committee. Item number 02021-3212 is a substitute ordinance to amend Section 7 of the Municipal Code regarding requirements to permit animals in licensed liquor establishment. Alderman Riley in the 42nd Ward, the sponsor and Alderman. I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee and pass this item by the same roll call as item number one on the Committee on Finance report and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 202021-4126, an ordinance amending the Municipal Code by including the 10th Ward and permitting the booting of vehicles on private properties by a private firm in the 10th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 302021-3964, an ordinance renewing restricted residential zone pursuant to Chapter 4-17 of the Municipal Code in the 13th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
There were 11 ordinance regarding moratoriums in the 21st Ward, the 24th Ward, 40th, 42nd, 45th, and 47th Ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And finally, item number 02021-4123, an ordinance to amend the Municipal Code of Chicago regarding regulation of brain operator. It was referred to the Committee on Rules. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Mitz. Next up, the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Alderman Burnett.
President, reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Monday, November 8, 2021. Before the committee, there were 295 items. There were 295 routine traffic items that passed and zero routine traffic items that did not pass. There was a substitute ordinance introduced by 1st Ward Alderman Daniel Laspada. an amendment of Municipal Code Titles 2, 4, 8, 9, 10, and 13 to update language concerning urban mobility, traffic safety, and wrecks that involve automobiles and encourage achievements of Vision Zero goals and call for a committee on pedestrian and traffic safety to hold hearings to discuss implementation of Vision Zero policies and equitable mobility. I move passage of these items in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you. Thank you.
There are no objections, so ordered. Next up, the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, Chairman Spazano.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, also known as the Happy Committee, for which a virtual meeting was held on November 4, 2021, the Committee recommends passage of the following item: 2021-4754, an expenditure of open space impact fee funds for payment or reimbursement to neighbor space for qualifying acquisition and work, including fencing of lots to extend Chicago fireworks. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chairman... Chairman Tony, we're going to go to you. Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards.
Madam President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on November 16 of 2021. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of members present. Page 1 contains one text amendment, document number 02021-4706, the amendment of Municipal Code Sections 17-6-0403 F and G regarding permitted by right and special use approval for eating and drinking establishments within planned manufacturing districts number 4A and 14. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Page 1 through 10 contains various map amendments in the 47th, 45th, 44th, 40th, 38th, 35th, 34th, 32nd, 31st, 29th, 27th, 26th, 25th, 22nd, 18th, 17th, 8th, 4th, 2nd, and 1st wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Page 10 contains one historical landmark fee waiver in the 3rd Ward located at 1936 South Michigan Avenue. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Objection, so ordered.
And page 11 contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade in the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 8th, 17th, 21st, 27th, 31st, and 42nd wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
And Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. Also, I had an amendment of the Municipal Code Section 9-64-206 by installing parking meters and regulating meter hours of operations on portions of West Addison Street 02021-4251 in the 44th Ward. Also, in the 44th Ward, there was an amendment of Municipal Code Section 7-38-117 by removing mobile food vehicle stand at 817 West Belmont Avenue, 02021-4300. I move for the passage of these items in the omnibus. Thank you, Madam President.
There are no objections, so ordered. Next up, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chairman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting on your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, a meeting which was held on November 10, 2021, the following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. On pages 2 through 13 include 137 ordinances for grants of privileges introduced by the local Alderman from wards 1 through 5, I'm sorry, 1 through 3, 5, 9 through 11, 15, 19, 21 through 24, 27 through 29, 32, 35, 37, 40 through 45, and 47 through 49. Page 14 includes 17 ordinances for canopies introduced by the local Alderman from wards 2, 27, 32, and 42. Pages 15 through 17 include one amendment and 25 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local Alderman from wards 1, 3, 7, and 8, 10, 19, 25, 27, and 28, 32, 34, 36, 38, and 39, 42, 45, and 48. Page 18 includes one ordinance for a transportation item introduced by the local Alderman from the 2nd Ward. Page 19 includes two subdivision ordinances located in the 11th and 21st wards. Page 20 includes five vacation ordinances located in the 4th, 24th, 40th, and 45th ward. Page 21 includes one amendment located in the 4th Ward that will be re-referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. If there are no objections, I move passage to these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Next up, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology. I understand that Chairman Wiegas has left the meeting. Vice Chair Mitchell.
And members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. On Thursday, November 4, 2021, the Committee held a virtual meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Items 1 through 3 are a series of reappointments to various special service areas. These items were voted on collectively. The reappointment of Eric J. Carsama as member of Special Service Area 17, the Central Lakeview Commission, reappointment of Joseph M. Hall as member of Special Service Area Number 33, Wicker Park and Bucktown Commission, and reappointment of Marcy S. Huddus as member of Special Service Area Number 33, Wicker Park and Bucktown Commission. I move for passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered. One moment, Chairman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins. Can you please turn his microphone on?
Thank you, Madam President. Please add my affirmative vote to the first successful motion in the Committee on Finance and negative vote to the subsequent motion to reconsider. Thank you.
So reflected. Please continue, Vice Chair.
Items 4 through 15 on the agenda are a series of ordinances on tax levy, scope of service, budget and management agreements to various special service areas, which are introduced, which were introduced by Mayor Lori Lightfoot during the October 27, 2021 City Council meeting. These items were voted on collectively. SSA Number 3, 63rd Street, located in the 13th, 16th, 17th, and 23rd wards. SSA Number 8, Lakeview East, located in the 44th and 46th ward. SSA Number 17, Central Lakeview, located in the 44th and 46th wards. SSA Number 25, Little Village, located in the 12th and 22nd wards. SSA Number 27, West Lakeview, located in the 32nd, 43rd, 44th, and 47th wards. SSA Number 40, Number 28 through 2014, Six Corners, located in the 45th ward. SSA Number 33, Wicker Park and Bucktown, located in the 1st, 2nd, and 32nd wards. SSA Number 35-2015, Lincoln Avenue, located in the 43rd ward. SSA Number 44, 103rd Street, Beverly, located in the 19th ward. SSA Number 48, Old Town, located in the 27th ward. SSA Number 71, Roseland, located in the 9th and 34th wards. And SSA Number 59, 59th Street, located in the 14th, 15th, 16th, and 23rd wards. I move for passage of these items by the same motion.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Alderman Mitchell. That concludes the Committee reports. Next up on the calendar, agreed matters, Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I received from the clerk a total of 94 items proposed of the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, tributary resolutions from the clerk from the following Alderman: Alderman Dow, Alderman Harris, Alderman Beal, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Brookins, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Secho Lopez, Alderman Irving, Alderman Wiegas, Alderman Mitz, and Alderman Spazada. I move these in the omnibus.
There are no objections, so ordered. Next up, new business. Madam Clerk, please call the wards beginning with the first.
Claims, fee permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Laspada has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Sections 10-28-015 and 10-28-017 to further regulate requirements for public way use permits, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Hopkins has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 10-8, by modifying Section 10-8-320 and adding a new section, 10-8-321, regarding reward program for reporting violations of commercial advertising on public property, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Quinn has proposed ordinance for renewal of designation of the 12th, 14th, and 29th precincts of the 13th Ward as restricted residential zones prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Burke has proposed ordinance for closure of a portion of West 46th Street, the vehicular traffic, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Burke also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Coleman and Alman Lopez have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-023, to disallow additional package goods licenses on portion of West 59th Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Brookins has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Austin has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 9718 South Halsted Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Vasquez has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 10-20-150, regarding issuance of C.DOT permanent applications for opening, openings, construction, and repair in public ways as residential disabled parking spaces, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Vasquez also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 8-32-140, that prohibit use of construction, repair, or demolition equipment creating audible noise during specified hours, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Vasquez also has proposed ordinance for honorary designation as Ed Negron Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Tony has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 17-11-0102-C, regarding exemptions for parkway trees, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Tony also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Osterman has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code, Sections 4-60-022 and 4-60-023, to disallow additional alcoholic liquor and package good licenses on portions of North Sheridan Road and North Broadway, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Silverstein has proposed ordinance for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 2516 West Devon Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Dow has proposed ordinance for transfer of funds within the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations for the year 2021, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alman Harrison and others have proposed resolution calling for hearings to discuss plans to eliminate delays in minority and women-owned business enterprise certification process, which is referred to Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Alman Cartheness has proposed resolution to calling for hearings on commissioning of feasibility study regarding City of Chicago purchasing the Chicago Bears franchise, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Two committees called, the Committee on Finance and the Committee on Budget. Matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alman Lopez has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 2-78, to further regulate powers and duties of civilian police and civilian office of police accountability and its chief administrator, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Two committees called, the Committee on Public Safety and the Committee on Rules. Matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alman Moore has proposed order to call for public service advertising campaign to reduce littering, to be known as Keep Chicago Clean, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alman Moore also has proposed resolution for amendment of the City Council Rules of Order and Procedure by modifying Rule 36 regarding procedures for selection of members, chairman, and vice chairman of standing committees, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alman Secho Lopez and others have proposed resolution to call for investment in American Rescue Act funds to install water meters and fix water leaks prioritizing low-income and underserved communities, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alman Secho Lopez has proposed ordinance for amendment of Plan Development Number 1054, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Roboyes and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on the impact of property distribution on commercial corridors and economic recovery, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alman Ramirez Rosa, Alman Vazquez, Alman Laspada, and others have proposed resolution calling for assessment of city's holdings, sale of existing investments in weapons manufacturers, and adoption of socially responsible investment policies prohibiting future investments in weapons-producing companies, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alman Wiegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 2-92, regarding certification of reporting requirements for veteran-owned and small local businesses, which is referred to Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Your Honor, that concludes all the medic introductions.
Thank you. Next up, approval of the Journal, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the journals from October 27, 2021, or October 29, 2021. I move that both be approved.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, I'd like to suspend the rules for remarks on our Toys for Tots that are being held this year for December.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Madam President and City Council, as we know, because of our situation with COVID and struggling, we have not been able to do the Toys for Tots Parade that usually occur every year along Western Avenue, and it's the first Sunday in December. So we are looking forward to getting back, watching these beautiful motorcycles ride down Western Avenue, putting some spirit and cheer and joy on many constituents' faces. As if you haven't joined that parade at any time, it would be just an eye-opening for you to get into the spirit of giving. And I think it's a great opportunity. We thank all of our Marine Corps and our Army Corps for participating. So much work goes into it, and they put their hearts out into this parade every single year that they can. So I asked my colleagues some who have joined on to the resolution to make sure that they do so. Thank you. Alman Lopez mentioned that he would like to be a sponsor as well of this resolution this year. And we would like others to join because it's a great way to let your children know that there is someone out here Santa, they can get to see them early. All of the beautiful elves and every Christmas cheer that you want to see, you can get to see it at this parade. It is something for your eyes to see. Back there, make you be a kid again. So thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to speak and make sure that your congregation know or anyone traveling down Western around that 8 o'clock hour, there would be traffic and you probably won't be able to get across. So take your routes and make it. But please allow for this parade to continue this year because it's one that we've missed and it's one that all of the volunteers have missed, and we're looking forward to it this year.
Thank you, Alderman Mitz.
I think my colleague Alderman Lopez wanted to speak on it as well.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. I just wish to join Alderman Emma Mitz and Alderman Spazado and Alderman Roboyes in support of the 44th Annual Toys for Tots Parade to commend the organization for always keeping the children of the 15th Ward... of the 15th Ward in their hearts and minds and helping them, many of whom have struggled throughout this pandemic or just struggling, period. So wish them all the best, encourage all of our members to join and support and come out and support them down Western. It's truly a sight to see and wish them all the best for continued success. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise to join my colleague, Alderman Mitz, in joining this resolution. Would love to support it. Thank you.
Any other members of the body that wish to speak to this matter? Alderman Mitz, do you move to return to the regular order of business?
Thank you, Madam President. And I would like to add Alderman Napolitano as a sponsor on this as well.
All right, so noted for the record. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is added to the resolution. Alderman Thompson added to the resolution. Alderman Garza, Alderman Scott.
I'd like to add the whole city.
Emma, you obviously started a little movement here. All the members of the City Council who wish to have their names added to the resolution, can you please come to the well so that you can physically add your name to the matter?
Now.
Want to work?
I guess you go up there.
Unless you tell me otherwise, I'm assuming all the members that are present today wish to have their names added to the resolution.
Madam President, this is one good thing we can all agree on.
I agree.
No controversy, I'm sure.
Supporting children in need is a good thing.
Absolutely. Madam President, maybe we can return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. We will return to the regular order of business. Alderman Mitchell, unfinished business.
Madam President, I am aware of one item of unfinished business that was noticed pursuant to Rule 41. It is an ordinance authorizing the Police Board to consider appeals seeking removal of status identification from a criminal enterprise information system. I defer to Chairman Talia Farrow.
Thank you, Madam President. I have one item, and members of the Council have one item that was noticed pursuant to Rule 41. As Alderman Mitchell stated, it's an ordinance invented in municipal code to authorize the Police Board to consider appeals seeking removal of status of identification from the criminal enterprise information system, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of October 14, 2021 as Ordinance 2021-4131. If no member wishes to speak on this item, I move for the passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Clarification, Chairman Talia Farrow. This would allow individuals to go to the Police Board as opposed to having the Police Department itself make the decision. The Police Board would be making that decision on petition by individual members.
That is correct, Madam President. This ordinance allows the Police Board to not only begin a process of implementing an appeals process for those wishing to have their names removed from the criminal enterprise information system, but it allows them to not only begin the process, but it allows them to, once that policy has been implemented, it allows them to physically act and hear cases to remove those members from the list that wish to be removed.
Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm the person who, along with others, deferred and published this matter last month. I will be voting no on this based on certain particulars. I think we haven't gotten enough information on the policy, and the latest I had heard was that people that are going to be on the database wouldn't even be proactively informed that they are in the database. So I have a problem voting in good conscience. So thank you.
So let me just clarify that. The Police Department and others will be making sure that there is outreach through a variety of channels to make sure that individuals have the information that they need, understand what the process is, and help facilitating them move through the process. So I wanted to make sure that that point of clarification was there. Chair recognizes Alderman Dowell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad to hear you reiterate that because that was a concern that I had regarding this ordinance. I think that it's very important that people are alerted proactively and affirmatively that they are on this database. And most people need to figure out how to work that appeal process, right, and how they should go about doing that. So I take you at your word that this is going to happen, and I'll be voting in favor of this ordinance today.
Yeah, as I mentioned, it's very important for us that we make sure, A, that we notify people, educate them about the process, and help them move through the process so that it's a real opportunity to remove their names. There's been a request for a roll call vote. Alderman Lopez, are you?
Sorry. Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. You know, as many of you know, addressing violence and fighting gangs is something that I've been doing almost my entire tenure here. Supporting a refined and useful gang database is something that I personally believe in. But I have an issue with what we're doing here today because we're putting the cart before the horse and saying we're going to come up with an appeals process before we know how you even get involved in the process to begin with. We have not had that discussion adequately. We've seen reports from both Inspector General and community organizations that says that the lists that we've created up until this point are nets that catch way too many fish. And for a list to be useful, it has to be narrow in scope. It has to have parameters to identify how people get on it. So then we can successfully create an appeals process that rectifies whatever has transpired for a person to get on that list. We don't have that information right now. We're going on a wing and a prayer that we're going to figure out the front end while trying to fix the back end. And that doesn't work for me. So while I personally support both having a list as well as an appeals process, that makes sense, I do not support this process in which we are doing this backwards, solving the problem before figuring out how you get on the list to begin with. And I would encourage either Chairman, the Chairman of Public Safety to hold this item and allow us to have a more collaborative and in-depth conversation on this matter, or else risk having members who would be otherwise supportive, like myself, voting no against this item. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I understand the point that a colleague from the 15th Ward has made. But the challenge is that if you have a list that is broad and individuals do not know that they're on it and can't get off of it, what benefit is that to them? I think that we've got to take a step in the direction of trying to give people an opportunity to get off of a list before we continue to hold the list, which we know may have some inaccurate information in it. I think the work of going out proactively in the community, allowing people, is almost like the inverse of the Treasurers Office cash program where you put your name in to see if you got some money coming back to you. I think we need to give people an opportunity to clear their names. I mean, especially given the height of challenges that we've faced in the city and in this country around prosecution. I think we need to give people an opportunity to clear their names. Furthermore, this database is, you know, has been used negatively to impact people's employment, citizen, I guess, immigration status and the like. So I think that starting a process to clear people, I think is a step that we need to make. Now, there are some things that need to be fixed in this, but I think holding that up while we do not give people an opportunity to clear themselves is not the right path to take on this. I think we need to support this effort in the Chairman and what he's trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Harrison.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. I agree with my Alderman, with Alderman Irvin and Alderman Lopez. This is backwards, and the fact that we're going to fix it later is just bunk, okay? We have the opportunity. There is no reason why this has to be passed today. They have asked that you hold it while we get some more information. I agree with everything that's been said. But since we know that there are problems, why not fix them? We always want to come in with the broom afterwards, sweeping it up. And it's time that we do something different because if we keep doing the same thing, expecting different results, that makes no sense. So I will not be supporting this at this time and would ask the Chair to hold it.
Oh, the Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. As we see that this is somewhat challenging and somewhat difficult, and as I've looked over it, I'm at a point that we cannot do anything. One of the things that, right now, it's within the Police Department. And so everything that we're saying and that we want to do and that we don't agree with in terms of the information and having a strategy is still not going to be there. And if the Police Department is now taking a database, an old database, from what I understand, and they are putting it in this new system, but they're using criteria, that's a good thing. And it hits the press and it gets people to say, what can I do to get my name off of this? What this does is, and I don't think just incumbent upon the administration, but I think it's incumbent upon us, Alderman, and it is challenging for us to come up with criteria, with ideas to help out. And so we just can't put it on the administration shoulder as I think it shouldn't just be squarely on their shoulders. We have some work to do here. But I don't think we can't do anything because if I have a cousin, a friend, or I better check to see if I'm on there because I have friends that I grew up with in Inglewood, and just because you hung out with somebody, you know, you were on there. And so this gives an opportunity for people to come before that board. And right now, if we do nothing, I think it's even worse not to do anything. And so I'll be supporting that for this reason because doing nothing and just leaving it as is is not a option. And I think it hurts the people that we're trying to help even more. So and let's move to make sure we, as Alderman, as well, get some information out there that can help move this forward. Thank you.
Chairman Talia Farrow, if I may.
Madam President, before I renew my motion, and if I could say, these two ordinances, or I should say, this ordinance is a policy that will create the criminal enterprise information system. There is nothing wrong with these two working in tandem. We have to allow our Chicago Police Board to begin the process and to begin putting procedures in place so that they can have an appeals process. And so there's nothing wrong with having this ordinance before this body and approved before this body while our Police Department still continue to work on the criminal enterprise information system. And I do want to correct the record, Madam President, because we met in July for over four hours with the Chicago Police Department, where hundreds of questions were asked about the criminal enterprise information system. But I certainly believe that there's nothing wrong with approving or giving our Police Board an authority or the authority because it's right now, it's not before their purview to be able to create a system to where our residents can appeal being on that list. So I ask that you support this ordinance to allow them to create the process for our residents to be able to do it. And at the same time, that would allow our Chicago Police Department to continue putting the database together that we could all be proud of. With that, Madam President, I renew.
Can I just ask a point of clarification? Because there were a couple of things that said that I believe are not accurate.